Good afternoon. It is Monday, November the 5th, 2018, 6:00 PM. Time to call the Garden City Council Meeting to order. I'm going to ask Gerald Etheridge from First Baptist Church, Garden City, to come and lead us in our invocation, and I'll lead us in the pledge.
Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Father God, we want to start our petitions tonight by saying thank you. Thank you for who you are. Thank you for what you provided us with. Father, we thank you that you love us when we're unlovable. Father, we thank you for placing us in society where you have, that we might serve you best. Father, we thank you for the safety that you provide for our city employees, particularly the first responders, Lord, because they answer calls never knowing what they're going to run into when they get there. Father, we pray that the things that are said and done here tonight will be pleasing into your sight, Lord, and that you will bless everything that is done. Thank you for providing this wonderful city for us to reside in. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Gerald.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time I'm going to ask the clerk to call Roll.
Mayor Botham.
Here.
Mayor Protim Kickley.
Here.
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Cody. Councilmember Daniel.
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Here.
And Councilmember Tice.
Here.
Thank you. This time I'm going to call our police chief up, Chief Ballard, to have a special presentation to one of our officers.
Thank you, Mayor. Officer Meeks, if you'll please come forward. Mayor, if you'd like to come on down?
I will.
A little recognition. Well, the reason we're here this evening, and I appreciate the opportunity to have this, where Officer Meeks could come in tonight so we could appropriately, publicly acknowledge that we have a Officer of the Year program that we do, and every quarter we pick an officer through the command staff who's nominated and voted on for their work with our department. And the officer of the fourth quarter, which means we'll be leading into the officer of the year soon in January, was Officer Meeks. And so I'd like to take a moment to read the commendation form I have for you. So please accept our congratulations on being selected as the Garden City Police Department's Officer of the Fourth Quarter 2018. This is an honor you can be proud of, as the selection process involves the nomination and vote by the entire Garden City Police Department Supervisory Command Staff. Your performance over the last several months has had a direct impact on our agency's success and overall safety of our community. We appreciate your hard work and dedication, and congratulations on a job well done. Well done.
Do you have your commendation letter? I also want to give you the part of your achievement. Please. Does the family like to take pictures?
We're going to stand here and take it all close to me.
(Laughter). Thank you for the family for coming. Again, great job. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
This time we're going to open up our meeting for anyone who wants to come forward and speak for three minutes. Is there anyone who wants to come forward and speak for three minutes at this time? Seeing no movement, we'll go into the rest of our agenda. We have a public hearing. I'm going to open up this public hearing, Mr. 2019 Proposed Budget, and our city manager is going to give us an overview on that at this time.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We hadn't even started the budget, and there's already tears. Thank you for the opportunity to present here tonight. We're going to go through our proposed fiscal year 2019 budget. We've got a few slides here that will outline, you know, the basics and overview of the budget. And of course, if there are any questions, we'll be happy to address those from the city council and/or people in the meeting tonight. Here we have the general fund, operational areas broken out, and then the subareas that they serve with regard to public works, public safety, community development, general government The projected revenue to operate, the general fund portions of the budget is about $9.7 million. The breakdown is shown in the pie chart here. Not surprisingly, taxes make up almost three-quarters of that particular revenue amount. That's property taxes, sales taxes, other taxes of that nature. Now, on the expenditure side of the general fund budget, we've got a corresponding $9.7 million of expenses. And as you look through the different departments or expenditure categories that are listed in the table, for the most part, most of the different departments were unchanged from 2018 to 2019, where there was a moderate adjustment municipal court or vehicle shop. We've talked about those items during our budget process. In some cases, it was just a enhanced need for particular equipment and services in the vehicle shop and/or a reduction in expense item with regard to municipal court. We talked earlier about the capital outlay expenditures increasing from $202,000 to $678,000. We talked about the fact that a lot of that is related to recreational proposals, and I use that word very carefully for 2019, meaning that the city staff will come back to the elected officials throughout 2019 with these proposals and provide them to you for consideration at that time. They're simply placeholders in the budget at this time, as they represent opportunities for different projects and programs in 2019. General fund expenditures broken down by the pie chart, once again, breaking down the different departments and operational areas of the city here into their respective slices of the pie, so to speak. The enterprise funds are our business funds that generate their own revenue to operate to a large degree. Our fire protection, stormwater management, water and sewer and sanitation or garbage services. The sub-operating areas of each of those main areas is shown in the squares associated with the slide. We'll start with the fire protection budget for 2019. Fire department is funded by a combination of different revenue sources. Those total revenue sources add up to right around $2 million. The corresponding expenditure amount for the department is just over $2 million as well. You can see the breakdown for each of the different categories or items under the revenue and the expenditures. And once again, we're proposing, as we discussed during the budget meetings, an increase in the fire protection monthly billing rate from its current $10 per billing unit or per residential customer to $12.50 per month per residential customer. So there is a slight increase proposed in the fire protection fund for 2019. We will not raise this rate, I believe, in five years. So once again, the increase in costs of running a fire department, of our skill and proficiency and call volume has necessitated a request on behalf of staff for an increase here. Stormwater budget for 2019 is basically the same year over year. We're running about a $900,000 program here, dedicated operation, maintenance, and regulatory compliance associated with our stormwater management needs within the city. The current billing rate is shown there at $4.75 per residential unit per month, but this number is unchanged for 2019. There's no proposed increase there. The 2019 sanitation garbage budget has a slight increase of about 3%. Once again, that rate is shown as a new rate, $15.84 per month per residential customer. I can tell you that that rate, two things about that rate. Number one, our private hauling company Waste Management notified us here within the last several weeks that there is a Consumer Price Index, or CPI, increase associated with their services for next year's contract. Correspondingly, the city has passed that increase along to the customers. The second part of that discussion is that our rate continues to be one of the lowest in the area as compared to some of our neighboring communities, which can be $5 or even $10 higher per month than Garden City. So although we had an increase, we still have a very competitive garbage rate for our residential customers, and I believe our service is certainly commensurate with the amount that residents pay each month for that service. So we do have a change, an increase in that budget for, or that rate for next year. The next area to talk about is the fiscal 2019 water and sewer budget. Once again, we've got a operation here of about $5 million a year. On the revenue side, you can see that we've got our standard water and sewer revenues and some other miscellaneous revenue sources, penalties, interest earnings, things of that nature. But then we also have GFA money that we utilize for capital projects, and we also have FEMA reimbursement from Hurricane Matthew damages is still coming in, and we're forecasting about $675,000 of money coming in from Matthew, Hurricane Matthew damage in 2019. This is money that we already outlaid from the water and sewer department over the last couple of years. So now we're replenishing or reimbursing those monies from FEMA, and then we'll ideally reinvest that money that comes back in from FEMA into more capital project and equipment rehabilitation needs that seem to be an ongoing issue for us each and every year with regard to this water and sewer fund operation. So we do have a slight increase in the budget, but once again, a lot of that is attributable to increased capital project needs of the city, which is a growing challenge for us to meet. General list of what the Capital Improvement Program, or CIP, is all about in 2019 is shown here. Work at the wastewater treatment plant, work on some pipelines that carry our treated sewage out to the Savannah River through the Georgia Ports Authority Project, some of our computer systems that run the water and sewer wells, water tanks, wastewater plants, lift stations. We're going to be doing some upgrades to that. And then town center irrigation system installation is another expense. That $1.3 million is the same number that you see in the total water and sewer capital improvement projects at the bottom of the previous slide. So once again, a lot of money being reinvested in the system. Ideally, that's all paying off for ensuring that we have good, sound service for our customers. Debt service for proposed 2019 shows some different GFA loans that we have been doing these projects using the funds from these GFA loans to do these projects, and then the revenue bond from back in 2013. Once again, all of these loans and bonds total about $770,000 in annual debt service. We've been forecasting this level of debt service for many years through some of our discussions in previous budget cycles. So, you know, we developed a plan to rehabilitate and upgrade a lot of our infrastructure and our equipment, and that's in fact what's occurring. And of course, there's a cost to do that, which is reflected here. Now, we've got our water and sewer rates spelled out here on this page compared to our neighboring jurisdictions. And as you can see, our 2018 numbers for a typical residential customer using about 5,000 gallons a month is shown in the first, and then on the other side of the slash is a commercial customer using about 15,000 gallons a month. So, you know, our rates are certainly competitive with our neighboring jurisdictions, but like we have the last several years, we have increased by about 3% the billing rates that we have to fund those different capital project needs that I talked about on the previous slides. The SPOS fund for fiscal year 2019 continues to be a major contributor to our capital needs that are outside of water and sewer, specifically roadwork, public safety equipment, debt service for City Hall, this facility here. It's all spelled out here on a slide that I know has got a lot of information on it, but once again, streets, drainage, public safety equipment, City Hall loan debt service make up a bulk of what we've got here. You'll also notice that we've got an increased amount of revenue in the 2018 budget related to the sales proceeds from the sale of the property here at Town Center, $1.3 million. That money's being reinvested in Town Center as we speak, and roads and utilities are being installed as part of the Roberts Properties project and development agreement that we have. But overall, the total expenditures and revenues for SPOS are pretty consistent year over year. So SPOS continues to be a great source of revenue for us to get the necessary projects and equipment purchases done throughout the city. Special revenue funds, these are the ones that are made up of the hotel motel tax. Total revenue projected for 2019 with hotel motels about $385,000. And then the expenditures are pretty well designated between the Savannah Trade Center out on Hutcheson Island, transfers out to the general fund, and then the portion that goes to the Convention and Visitor Tourism Board. Each equates to an expenditure that offsets that revenue. Speaking of the tourism board, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, CVB, we've included a slide for that special revenue fund this year as well, bringing in about $258,000 in revenue from miscellaneous sources, and then having a corresponding set of expenditures to offset some of that incoming revenue for 2019 with those expenses for 2019. That completes my overview and presentation of the budget. If there's any questions that myself or our finance director, Rhonda Bowles, can answer, we'd be happy to answer those questions.
Thank you, Rhonda. Any questions from council concerning the budget?
Yes.
I think staff did a very good job putting it together, a lot of numbers to look at, and I'm very pleased with where we're at for next year in our budget.
Well, I'll close by saying that financially, the city's on very sound foundation right now as a result of the efforts of certainly the finance staff, but you, the city council, in helping to shape the vision and help us with the decisions to lead us to the point we're at right now, where those different business funds, enterprise funds, as well as the general fund, are on very sound financial grounds. So that's good news all the way around.
Thank you. This time I'm going to open up for discussion. Anyone in the audience who would want to come forward and address any issues with the budget or make any comments about our budget. Seeing no movement, I'm going to close this public hearing. We've got another public hearing, alcoholic beverage license application, Pilot Travel Center. Receive a public comment on an alcoholic beverage license application made by Selena Turner to sell wine, beers, and malt beverages at Pilot Travel Center, number 721504, Dean Forest Road, Garden City, Georgia. I'm going to open up this public hearing. Does anyone want to come forward and speak in favor of the motion? Is there anyone who wants to come forward and speak opposed? I'm going to close this public hearing. This time, consideration of city council minutes dated 10/15/18, and workshop synopsis dated 10/22/18. Entertainer motion?
Motion approved.
Second. Motion is made in second. Voting on the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're going into our staff reports. Receive monthly report from Director of Information Technology, Ben Brigman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
This is the technology and building report for the month of October. Time flies. In the IT department, we deployed one new laptop and one new desktop. We replaced two copiers with, throughout the city. We continue the installation configuration of the Tyler upgrade, or software installation, actually, for the court and the police department. The process of the upgrade in the BodyCam is nearly completed. We have a new BodyCam server going in. On the website side, we had nine, website and social media, 916 followers on Facebook, 483 followers on Twitter. Building and maintenance highlights are, we fixed a leak that we had in the shower pan in the men's locker room, and we completed maintenance on the HVAC. This concludes my report unless there are any questions.
Any questions for Ben?
No.
Thank you, Ben. Next up is Director Parks and Rec, Cliff Ducey.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I have the Parks and Recreation Report for the month of October. I'll start with the senior center. We had 34 seniors per day on average eating lunch with another 15 enjoying the senior center either with the fitness equipment or playing pool. So I kind of included that now in the reports where I was just doing the ones that ate. So we also, like I said, have about 15 additional people that don't eat that enjoy the senior center on a daily basis. During the month of October, they had several events. The highlight, one of the highlights was their Halloween party they had on October 26th, I mean, October 30th. They had 26 seniors enjoy that. And upcoming events coming up, they've got, well, tomorrow the senior center will be closed for voting. They're going to do some things outside of the senior center that Judy has set up ahead of time with them. But on November 7th, they're going to have 5:00 PM an old-fashioned winnie roast with smores outside. So if y'all would like to attend that, they'll do that this Wednesday, November 7th at 5:30 at the Garden City Senior Center. Also, on November 9th and then November 16th, they've got trips planned to use the van to go over to Hilton Head. They're doing that twice this month. And then on November 20th, mark your calendars again, November 20th, they'll do their annual senior center Thanksgiving meal at 11:30 AM. It's November 20th. Onto the Cooper Center. We're averaging about 20 youth per day participating over in the Cooper Center and having a good time with all this offered over there. And on to our sports programs and activities, we're just finishing our football season. We've got our 53rd Annual Rebel Bowl starting this Wednesday night. We've got 26 teams participating this year. So we'll go from this Wednesday all the way through until the 15th of November. Also, we've got basketball registration that's ongoing now, but we're going to do a special registration this Saturday from 10 to 12 at the Garden City Gym. As always, our prices are $25. If you're a resident, $35, non-resident. During the regular weekdays, they can register anytime between 8:30 and 5:00 at our recreation office at 160B facility, Thomas Way. And we do take credit cards and debit cards now in the office. Also, another thing that we mention quite often is our youth gymnastics. It's $40 for eight sessions, ages three to 13. And that goes on every Thursday night at our recreation, the back part of the gym. And to mention one more thing about the basketball signups, that's for ages three to 14, both boys and girls. And that concludes the Parks and Recreation Report. Any questions?
Any questions for Cliff? Still making good progress on renovation of concession stand?
I'm glad you brought that up, because I forgot.
It's dear and dear to my heart.
(Inaudible).
Well, I met with Ron Alexander over there today and the builder, and they look like they're about halfway through with it. It looks really good. They've already framed in the addition on the backside, the bathrooms for the men and women bathrooms. I know Councilman Tice will be excited about that, but it's looking really good. It really is. We've got a long ways to go. We should be finished right at first of the year, but it's looking really good.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rhonda, do you have any updates?
No, sir.
We have a number of items for consideration. First up is ordinance for foreclosed vacant property registry. I'll ask the clerk to read that by heading only.
An ordinance to amend Article 4, Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances of Garden City, Georgia, as amended, to provide for vacant and foreclosed property registries, to provide for definitions, to provide for exemptions, to provide for maximum fees and penalties for registration, and failure to register, to provide for appellate rights, and to provide for severability.
Entertainer motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second. And Rhonda, could you give us an overview of this, please?
Yes, this ordinance has been put together by the city staff, working with the city attorney. As we continue to try and enhance our efforts in the code enforcement, property maintenance areas of the city, this is going to enable us to identify and work with vacant and/or foreclosed properties to try and, you know, maintain the, their good housekeeping aspects through the code enforcement staff primarily. And hopefully, this will enable us to do a better job of keeping these properties in good order, even though they're vacant and/or foreclosed on as a result of whatever circumstances has resulted in that, getting them on the list.
Thank you. Council, have any questions? Voting on the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously on the first reading. We have to have a second reading on that. I'd ask to suspend the rules of council. I'd ask for a motion on that, please.
Make a motion to suspend the rules of council for a second reading.
Second.
Motion made in second. Voting on the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I asked the clerk to read the ordinance again, please, by heading.
An ordinance to amend Article 4, Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances of Garden City, Georgia, as amended, to provide for vacant and foreclosed property registries, to provide for definitions, to provide for exemptions, to provide for maximum fees and penalties for registration, and failure to register, to provide for appellate rights, and to provide for severability.
We have a motion in the second. Voting on the ordinance, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion passes on the second reading. We have our occupational tax renewal agreement. I'd ask clerk to read that by heading only.
A resolution of the Mayor and City Council to authorize the city to renew its occupational tax revenue enhancement agreement with Avenue Insights and Analytical LLC for the recovery of occupational tax revenue from businesses in the city not on the city's current occupational tax registration list, to authorize the city manager to execute the renewal contract.
Entertainer motion on this?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion made in second, and this is just a renewal of an existing contract we have with a vendor who's basically been doing a very good job for the city.
Yes, for the last several years, correct.
We have a motion in second. Voting on the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have another one with the Tax Administrative Services Renewal Agreement. I'd ask clerk to read that by heading only.
A resolution by the Mayor and City Council to authorize the city to renew its agreement with Avenue Insights and Analytical LLC for the provision of tax administrative services with respect to occupational tax, hotel motel tax, mixed drink, exercise tax, and other taxes designated by the city, to authorize the city manager to execute the renewal contract.
We had a motion in second, so is there any discussion on this? Same story?
Similar type situations, what you mentioned earlier. This is the annual renewal and processing of business, other, all types of taxes. So, but once again, renewal of a contract we've had for many years with this firm.
Thank you. Voting on the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution alcohol beverage license renewal for 2019. I'd ask clerk to read that by heading only.
A resolution by the Mayor and City Council to authorize renewal of the Garden City alcohol license for the 2019 calendar year, to provide for review and limited investigation of said license holder and for other purposes.
We have a motion made in second on this. Is there any discussion?
(Mm-hmm).
No discussion. Voting on the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Did I mess up? I didn't have a motion?
I think they made a motion.
All right, we'll back you up then.
Okay. Can we get a motion on the resolution of the alcohol beverage license?
All right, I'm sorry about it, Rhonda. So I'd entertain a motion on this, Ben?
I make a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion made in second. Now we're voting on the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Y'all need to let me know. Everybody was having this dumbfounded look.
We were rolling too.
Okay. We have one more. I'd ask the clerk to read that by heading only.
Consideration by the city council on alcohol beverage license application made by Selena Turner to sell wines, beer, and malt beverages at the Pilot Travel Center, store number 0721504, Dean Forest Road, Garden City, Georgia.
Entertainer motion on this?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second, and in chief, this meets all the criteria that we have. Okay. So we have a motion, second, voting on the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries. At this time, is there any other business that needs to come forward to council tonight? Is there any other business? Now, you may be wanting to... Now, you may be wanting to come up and address the council, and that should have been done in the very beginning of the meeting, but I'm going to make an exception and let you come up and speak. We can't have any dialogue with you. You can come up and state what your issue is, and we can let you speak for three minutes. And we have a timekeeper that'll keep time. And if you want to do that, if you come up and state your name, address for the record, and speak for three minutes.
Mayor, I might just say, anything that's before the court at this time, which I think this matter is, is not a proper subject matter for open discussion.
So we can't even have a, okay, okay. Did you understand that this particular case is in the court's hands, and so therefore, I'm not allowed for you to come up and address that? Okay? Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Is there any other business that needs to come forward? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made, and second, we are adjourned.